All right, good evening, everybody. For the record, it's 5:15 PM on Thursday, November 16th, 2017. We are out of executive session. I've called the meeting to order. First item would be the pledges to our flag. Councilmember Huffaker, would you lead us?
Absolutely. You all rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Huffaker. And for the record, we have all seven councilmembers here this evening. First item on our agenda this evening would be our consent items, which includes approving this evening's agenda, the vouchers, and the amendments from the previous meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, the vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Bailey, to approve this evening's consent items, put in the agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes. Discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda would be citizen comment. This should be a time when any member of the audience wish to address the council on any item that's either on today's agenda or not. We ask that you come up, unless there's a -- Mitch will have some time for you on the other stuff. Anybody wish to address the council at this time? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Need your name and address for the record. Sit down.
Lori Nelson, excuse me, 933 Cooley Drive. I was here in June and was talking about the intersection of Ninth and Schlan and the need of maybe changing that light to where there's a designated left-hand turn when you're heading west. And there was another accident this coming week where somebody was actually rolled up on their side and stuff. And the clinic using Hastings, that whole parking lot is just packed and stuff. And the more people are going to be going, walking through that intersection. I asked then if there's any way to put a light similar to the one down on Fifth and Schlan.
Right.
Except for it be an actual turn light and then blinking yellow like that one is, maybe keep people from getting plowed into or pedestrians maybe hit.
So we have our traffic engineer in the room. Traffic engineer? We've looked at all different kinds of things for that stretch, haven't we?
I wasn't sure from June if there's anything actually talked about or done.
Well, we've done a few things already with signing up there, but the trouble is there's been a lot more demand, a lot more pedestrians, so yeah, we are seeing additional bad things happening out there. So there are some things we could look at doing. It would involve slowing down the state highway, potentially split phasing the signal so pedestrians are better protected. I haven't sat down and done an analysis of what collisions have occurred in the last six months or something.
Yeah, because Schlan Street is just, you know, it's used all the time anyway with people coming into town and stuff.
So Gary, is that something you can do in the next, say, three months? Do a little bit of an analysis there, look at the traffic impacts, and see if there's some low-cost fixes there?
We can look and see what other things that we can do out there.
Okay.
Because I know you were going to look into it in June and stuff, but I just hadn't heard or seen if anything was going to be done.
Yeah. So currently, we don't have anything, but let's -- Gary, why don't you put that on your to-do list?
Confluence has been asking us for an additional crosswalk.
Okay.
South of that location because there have been another, a number of parking lots go in there, I think mostly for employees, so there's a much greater demand for employees across the Schlan near Ninth.
Right.
A lot of the things that have been happening aren't even in the crosswalk. A lot of the folks are crossing outside of the crosswalk, which is making a problem there also.
Oh, yeah.
A difficult one to solve with engineering solutions.
It's lethal. People crossing everywhere.
So we'll spend a little bit of time getting at it, and we'll make sure staff gets back to you, maybe sometime first part of next year.
Okay, cool.
Great.
Can I ask you a quick other question? Pioneer Street, I live by there and stuff, and I was talking and called someone about it and stuff, the leaves everywhere, the maple tree leaves and stuff, and they just blow them in the street and stuff. And street sweeper coming and going every week, and piles of them. And I had called and talked to someone about the leaves and stuff, and next thing I know, the city's bringing a dump truck in with a whatever scoop or whatever. And that day, they had hauled three loads away. And they were there the other day hauling more away with their and the street sweeper after them. And they had mentioned that it was the city's responsibility for those trees?
It depends on where they're at and if they're in city right-of-way or not. And probably, I don't know if those are in city right-of-way or not. If they're not, it's the responsibility of the homeowner.
Yeah, they just blow them in the street.
But just like everybody, they blow their snow out in the street, and we take care of it. They blow their leaves in the street, and we take care of it.
It's just piles, though. I mean, you would think it was country road or something, and someone threw leaves everywhere and stacked. But anyway, because they end up on the sidewalk, and of course, I had a boot on because I had surgery, and it makes it kind of difficult to see where the crosswalk or the sidewalks.
Because there's too many leaves, yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Well, thanks for being here.
No problem. Thank you. Have a nice holiday.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? Be no other takers. We will move on to our first item, and so since we're in the middle of trying to get lots of things done towards the end of the year, our first item is actually work session item regarding our pavement management program. So I'll just kind of tee it off, and Matt, come on up. I don't know who else is coming up with you. If you remember, councilmembers and those in the audience, I don't know, a year and a half or so ago, we hired some consultants to go out and kind of take a measurement of all of the pavement in our city. They came back with about a 70%, 7B rating out of 100, but they basically said that we were going to start deteriorating really quickly. We put together a citizens committee to kind of look at the pavement management report, look at different options for how we might repave our streets. They came up with a, and I'll get to 5B or 5D, roughly about a $30 million ask over the next 10 years, or about $3 million a year. We then kind of put it on the back burner, kind of waiting to see what the revenue from Old Station would look like and how much the city could actually contribute to our road fund. And so, as you know, with the budget that we'll pass tonight, we're taking all of our property taxes to the road fund. And so this is kind of an update as to, okay, where are we at? They had the consultants came back and updated a little bit. And then, okay, so now where are we at with what the city contribution is? How far short are we of getting to our number? And then some discussion, which we've talked about kind of informally about at least one revenue option, which would be some form of a BNO tax that would get some of our medical service providers to kind of help pay for our road system. So I think I'll tee it off to Matt and Gary to at least talk about the pavement management portion of that, and then maybe Steve King or Allison or others on the financial side of stuff. Gentlemen?
Yes, so thanks. You guys have seen versions of this presentation before, but yeah, the city's been working on a pavement management program for, probably since the city existed. Pavement management's always been something we've been, you know, trying to get to, and we've hired a consultant, sorry, I closed it, to put together a pavement management's program to, that's kind of a comprehensive look at maintaining the system pretty much forever and keeping whatever the level of service that is acceptable to the citizens so we can maintain that infrastructure. It's one of our largest infrastructures the city has. So in 2012, the city generated a, created a transportation benefit district, that's the $20 car tabs. That generates about $500,000 a year. The options the state gave for that is you can either do a sales tax or a car tab. The city chose a car tab at that point. And that's been really helpful to get some projects done. We did a chip seal on Miller Street. We paid, used it to part, to add some paving to the downtown revitalization project a few years ago. We're also using it this summer on some sidewalk work on South Schlan. And then we hired the consultant in '15, and then per your guys' council's recommendation, we hired a, we got a citizen advisory committee to help make recommendations for how to proceed with managing the system. So just kind of go back on the system a little bit. We have 238 lane miles, which estimate would cost over $200 million to construct. This is kind of the curve that shows how pavement deteriorates. You can see, you know, once, once it starts going, it goes really fast. So that's kind of the red area is what we really definitely want to avoid. So there's, the standard of the practice is you, a pavement condition index is assigned to each section of road from 1 to 100. 0 to 25 is very poor, 25 to 50 is poor, 50 to 70 is good, and then 70 to 100 is very good.
And our program is modeling 735 segments creates our network.
So they kind of looked at, when they went out and modeled and did studies, they did, so sometimes roads got rebuilt in little pieces, so say, Miller Street, it's not the same the whole way through. They picked sections based on the, so they were similar condition throughout the network. So this was our results in 2016. The overall PCI was 72, or was it 70? Is that right? Yeah, I think it was 72. Yep. And then, so as you can see, we had a lot that was very good. 72% of ours stuff was very good. 21% was good, 6%, 6.7 was poor, and then .3 was poor. And it might have been 75. There's another slide later here that tells us that. Okay, so yeah. So 2015, our network average was 75. And then to this, we got the results back here just yesterday.
So we did another one just in the last couple of months?
Yeah, so we did one this summer, just to see how it's been modeling and how our model has been comparing, so what the projection was to what's really there. So this is something that we, you know, right away, we would probably do every couple of years until we got a curve for each road that's working well, and then we would do a PCI rating of that road in a large, you know, over five, maybe five or five years. So this showed that our, our network went from a 75 to a 70, so we lost five points in two years.
Going through last winter, I thought we'd lost 25.
Yeah, so but, yeah, and you can, you know, from that, from that curve, you can see once it starts going, it really starts going.
And that's a preliminary result from the field surveys that were done this fall at 70, but it also, it aligns with what our computer model is telling us it should be at this time based on that deterioration curve. So that's a good thing.
Okay.
Yeah, so this kind of goes back, the standard practice for pavement management is, rather than waiting for the road to fall apart and doing a full rebuild, it's a lot faster to do incremental improvements to maintain, the cheaper improvements to maintain your system. So that's what this program is trying to do, is to maintain the system with smaller-scale projects rather than full rebuilds, full rehabs, that are $30 to $80 a square yard versus $1 to $2 a square yard for preventative maintenance stuff. So our citizens committee, I note I saw Dwayne here, I don't know if anyone else showed up. So Dwayne was on the, on the committee. We also had John Alexander, Randy Aspilin, Steve Koch, Courtney Tiffany, and Manuel Valencia. And it was a really good group. Everyone was really engaged. We got some, had, you know, we got it done pretty fast and the, but the meetings were really good. We had, almost all the people showed up each, each meeting. So we had six meetings, and they looked at 16 different pro models. So we presented them with, I think, three initially, and went back to the drawing board to go figure out different scenarios based on what kind of treatment we wanted, if we wanted seal coats, or we wanted just overlays, or if we wanted, you know, what kind of, what kind of criteria we would have for if it's just on residential, what that PCI could be versus a main arterial collector. So kind of the main recommendations that the board, the committee came up with was, their goals were to have a recommendation that doesn't make the pavement infrastructure worse over the next 10 years, and then recommend a scenario for maintain, maintain the pavement that doesn't have more arterials and collectors fall into the poor and very poor categories. So you can see from that first one, we only had 6.7% in that poor category, so it was pretty, our network's pretty, pretty good right now. And then have a scenario that limits patuminous surface treatments such as chip seals to only residential streets, although there's still be the availability of the decision tree to see if another surface can be utilized.
Except the Miller Street.
Funding sources.
Is that what this is?
Yeah, so that was just kind of limiting, trying to go away from that. So if we were going to do it, try to stick with something that's more just overlay on streets like Miller, Western, our main Ninth, Fifth, those main arterials. So yeah, 16 different scenarios, and they ended up with going with scenario 5B as their recommendation. Just maintains a PCI 75 on the arterials and collectors, and then a PCI 70 on the residential street. So collectors are going to be in a little better shape, kind of like they were two years ago, and then what they're like today would be what the residential streets would be like. And then only overlays and reconstruction on arterials and collectors, and then chip seals, everything on residential.
Yeah, so they worked us and our consultant really hard with those 16 scenarios, looking at what kind of cost was coming out every time. And that's how we'd play around with, okay, can we get down to a more reasonable cost if we lowered the pavement condition, if we were willing to settle for something a little bit less on the residential streets, which is, you know, 2/3 of our system. So that, that involves a lot of cost, and we were adding cost by looking at, you know, hot mix asphalt only on our arterials and collectors, which, we support that, it just, it costs us more money.
So the scenario 5B ended up being over the, so we modeled this over 10 years. That ended up being 29.7 million, so 2.97 a year, and that got an average PCI of 72. So it would be a little bit better than it is, or about exactly what it is today. I think the average was 72 today. So this, sorry, we didn't have a map, but this kind of shows.
It's easily readable, by the way, for us.
I know. We got a different thing here. So this shows.
Much better.
What, what projects are going to be done in the next three years? So this is scenario 5B, so Gary, you got kind of some major roads.
So these, you can, you can see this, how does this work?
I gotta use the arrow.
Dang it.
We probably don't need all the specifics.
No, you don't need all the specifics. It's a long laundry list, and what it, what this thing is, if, and if we had it mapped, it'd be on a nice map, and there'd be different colors, one color for hot mix asphalt and another color for chip seals. So, but in a nutshell, the, the first year of the program, we'd be, I'll just talk about paving, you don't care so much about chip seals. We'll be doing a lot of chip sealing in a lot of residential streets, but in the first year, we'd be looking at paving going on on Cherry Street between Lambert and Miller, Okanagan between Russell and Kititas, more Okanagan between Kititas and Arondo, Miller Street between Millardale and Cherry, Old Station Road out in Old Station, couple of sections of Red Apple Road, and, and a section of Western, Southwestern Avenue. And then the second year, we'd have Holly Street, Menau Street between Crawford and Terminal, sections of Northwestern Avenue, and also a pretty nice piece there on, on Arondo between Cherry and Maple, no, Cherry and Washington. Those are the first couple of years. And then the third year, there would be a Ninth Street that our maintenance guys have had to do quite a bit of work on just this last year, all the way from Miller to Western would get an overlay. That's nearly a million, 850,000. Jennings Street, which is actually a residential, would get paved, a couple of sections of First Street, more of Arondo, some of Number Two Canyon Road, and Millardale Avenue. Those are just the roads that we, you'd be, you'd be seeing new asphalt on in the first three years of the program. And along with that comes a whole array of residential streets that'd be getting some sort of a surface treatment, whether it be a chip seal or a slurry seal or a micro seal like we talked about.
And all the prices that you have there, you've got the ADA compliance built into all that and?
Correct.
So yeah, the overlays require, and a micro require ADA, and then the chip seal doesn't. So that's why the chip seal's quite a bit cheaper.
So on the numbers, like this year, we only spent $500,000? Is that what I saw? $25? Oh, okay. And next year is 1. something I saw?
Oh, yeah, let's go back there.
I was kind of curious.
Yeah, so it, so yeah, we would spend.
So we don't, we don't get the three right away where you guys?
Yeah, so we should, we should be able to cash flow this if it gets fully funded. So yeah, you have some big years, and we would, you know, we could play with those and move them around if, you know, whatever the funding availability is of the balance. But yeah, the first, it kind of starts out slow, first two years, and then there's a bigger year, and then there's, yeah, that one, 21 is 3.9 million.
It takes a while for those funds to build up, to have enough money in them if we're going to cash flow them as opposed to go to the bond market, and so I think they've recommended just trying to cash flow it as the money comes in. So I think that's, that's kind of what the recommendation is to.
Yeah. We looked at, that one of the 16 scenarios was borrowing $10 million bucks and doing it all now, but that ended up being, I think, $35 million over the 10 years, so it wasn't cost-effective to do that.
Can you buy the oil like a year ahead of time or something like that, or, you have, like if there's a, if you know it's a, I don't have a crystal ball.
Yeah.
But if you know, for some reason, it's a steel of a deal next year, we can throw some extra money, is that a smart thing to do?
So I mean, once we had a program, we could bid the projects earlier, which would give the contractors more time to, you know, shop their materials and get contracts, but for us, we really can't do that. We have, you know, limits on how much we can buy.
They take, they take the gamble.
So they take the gamble, yeah.
Well, when we know we got a program, we're going to be putting a lot more oil out, we'll be talking to the industry the same as the DOT does, to give them an idea of what kind of workload there's going to be, what kind of material needs there's going to be in the valley.
Yeah, because they do, they do, like you say, they do buy up oil and have it contracted, so they have, they can actually bid, right?
So we banked some of the TBD money the last couple of years, which is why I think last time I was here, we were going to do a project where we're going to do a lot of the side streets with the DOT's paver all through town on Mission Street, all the way through, and then North Wenatchee Avenue, about, I think we're doing 35 or 40 segments that'll basically, we'll be bringing those all up to 100. So what'll happen next year?
Our PCI will go up.
Our PCI overall network is going to go up several points, maybe back up to 75 again.
That's just how this program works, right? It drops, it goes up, it drops.
And so I think we're thinking probably the year after next is when we would like to be able to start this program. Or have the funding in place to be able to actually start managing our pavements this way through an asset management.
So the payment committee, they had some funding recommendations, so to raise the 2.9 million. So we estimated that we would need an additional, so 1.2 would be able to come from existing resources, so we needed an additional 1.6 million.
You had about a million.
Oh, no, that's, that's different. This was based on what they provided. So they were hoping we would get a BNO tax for medical facilities that would generate about $480,000, and then increase the utility tax on water sewer garbage from 16% to 19%, which would generate another $600,000. And then, so kind of the BNO tax, the reason they recommended that was because those facilities aren't currently paying property tax, which is going into the, into the pavement system now. And then the water sewer garbage, the 16 and 19 was, the garbage trucks on the residential streets, which Gary mentioned, is a large piece of our, our infrastructure, that the garbage truck's probably the heaviest piece of equipment that's running on those streets that's doing the most damage. So that, that was kind of the justification there. And then, and then increasing the car tabs from $20 to $40. And that was just a temporary option until the regional gas tax. If, if the regional gas tax was approved, then that $20, extra $20 car tab would go away. So that pretty much got the, the program fully funded. It was a little bit short, but, but yeah, pretty much fully funded.
That was one year ago, and we thought we'd need about 1.6 to fund it a year ago.
So going this year, so you guys, now you, all with all the property tax going into the pavement, ends up, we are only about a million dollars short rather than the 1.6. So our, our, we're, so rather than needing, wait, yeah, rather than needing 1.6 from those three, we need about one. So we added an extra 600.
The city's been able, because of our, all of our property tax go into the road.
We generated an extra $600,000.
So we've taken that to a point where it's a million dollars.
So we're a million dollars short.
From the committee's recommendation.
Yeah. So, you know, kind of how we plan to deliver this thing, if, if it gets fully funded, is the overlays with, and would be done with contractors, we hire contractors whenever those projects, like Gary mentioned, the next three years, we'd have bid documents and go out to bid and get the low bidder and do those projects. The, all those projects include going out before and doing some patching work, patchwork to repair some areas that, and that would all be done with the city crews.
You guys did a bunch of skin patching last year, didn't you?
Yeah, we did. And we, it'd be a little bit different than that, it'd be more digging out, or get, we'd maybe get a grinder, just do some grinding. So it would be all kind of smooth before the paver came in. And then doing our own crack sealing like we currently do. They, the, the program estimated a pretty low number on the crack sealing, and we would probably bump that up because we, that's the cheapest form of pavement preservation that we can do, so we think it's important. And then we would be doing the, so the, the patch work on all the chip seals and the, and the overlays. And then hopefully, you know, that would be kind of the start, and maybe we could get to a point where we're, we're doing more of the ADA work with our own crews, so we have a couple more people, and we're doing some sidewalk crews. So with that, we would end up probably needing an additional five full-time employees to deliver the program. And that would be probably four maintenance people, one pavement manager. And then I'll turn it over to Allison on the, on the BNO tax here.
So part of the information that we wanted to provide you tonight was a background on, on getting to this point, and we did send out a, a copy of the draft ordinance to everyone. We have extra copies here if anyone needs, or if anybody in the audience would like a copy of the draft ordinance.
Mitch is going to want one, but he can pick one up when he comes up and talks.
Okay. So it's important that to get to this point, the overall city's operation and operation of our general fund, and then getting to the pavement management program. As you'll remember, the Sustainability Committee in 2014 identified a number of recommendations for future funding of the city to ensure that we could maintain our city operation and, and have the infrastructure improved. And so in that analysis, there were a number of revenue sources that were identified, and, and one of those was identifying that the city had significant tax-exempt properties. And so options to deal with these were business licensing of employees, payment in lieu of taxes, and a limited BNO tax. And so as you will remember, when we put together that initial work plan coming out of the sustainability report, the city council identified an 18-month work effort that included seeing where we were with the Old Station annexation and doing the Island annexations. Those actions were taken, and we're now seeing the results of that, and obviously with the report of getting all of our property tax into the street fund, the $600,000 better off in, in reducing that 1.6 to a million. And so now that we have a full understanding of our pavement management annual needs, the BNO tax on medical has been identified as the best alternative. We did explore PILT with no luck there. And so I think it's also important to know that we've discussed this option and the other funding options significantly. We had a Wenatchee learns class, so we had our students look at all of the funding options, and, and they chose this one. We did look at our other exempt property owners. So the PUD does pay a privilege tax to us, the school district is exempt, but they do participate with us through partnerships. Obviously, the state is exempt, and so tax-exempt medical providers have employees and customers that rely on our street network as well as the access via ambulance, and so property taxes are used to maintain that road system. And business licensing, our, our businesses already do pay utility tax and property tax, and the utility tax is, we've had discussions about the impact of the utility tax. So at this point, the BNO tax was the best option. And so our attorney is here with the draft ordinance and is prepared to go through that with you.
Steve Smith, city attorney. So as Matt and Allison laid out, it appears that it's kind of devolved to a potential business and occupation tax to generate this revenue, and the city has the right to enact a business and operations tax to raise revenue. City has the right to create different classes of businesses. They have to be treated the same within the class, but they, but classes can be treated differently. The maximum tax rate is .2%. So if you write that. So if you write that out, it's 0.002. Brad and I spent quite a bit of time the other day working that math. You make a screw up, it's a big deal. But that's the maximum rate. And so I was asked to prepare an ordinance that would enact a BNO tax. And so I did that, and I think you probably have a copy of it, it's Proposed Ordinance Number 2017-29. It's, I apologize, it's kind of an ungainly ordinance, it's really voluminous, but the state law requires that we use a model ordinance. And so that model ordinance has a lot of stuff in it.
A lot of it's definitions too, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
A lot of it does not apply to what we're trying to do, because we're, we are trying to limit it to one class, which is essentially professional healthcare services. And that's defined in the ordinance that would pick up most of the, the healthcare services provided here in the, in the city. And then the proposal is that rather than using the maximum tax rate, that the tax rate be 0.15%, or 15 hundreds of a percent, I guess it might be.
0.0015.
That's correct, yeah. We tested that out. And so no, no real rhyme or reason to that, other than we thought that was the best place to put it, and the mayor suggested that would give the council room to move up or down, you know, depending on what you might want to do. It would only apply to professional healthcare services. It would also be only apply to businesses with gross receipts exceeding $12 million. So smaller healthcare providers theoretically wouldn't come in, wouldn't be taxed under this ordinance. And those are kind of the highlights. The mechanics of the ordinance require a referendum procedure, so if we pass it, it has to, and it has to go through this waiting period, and there's an opportunity for a referendum and a vote and that kind of stuff. But otherwise, it could be effective in as short as seven days.
In how long?
Seven days.
So if we, the thought was, this would be kind of the work session to kind of get it out in discussion, and then we would vote on it in December, so that even though it could adopt in seven days, you would make that ordinance effective January 1 of 2018?
It could, you could pick the effective date.
Which would probably make some sense.
Yeah.
So any discussion for either of our, either the pavement management staff folks, the committee, Steve or Allison? I, I think Dr. Garrison from Confluence Health is here, and I'd like to have him come up and say a few words. Mostly, I just want you guys to have some time to think about this over the next three weeks or so. We'll plan on having this, or if you direct us to do something different, for your consideration at our December meeting. The idea being, if we're going to enact some revenue sources, we'll need them in 18 to start getting the pot of money that Gary and Matt need to start our pavement program. No questions? Mitch, you want to come up and say a few words on behalf of the Confluence and the Medical Group? Give us your name for the record.
Sure. Thank you for having me. So my name is Mitchell Garrison, I am a physician at Wenatchee Valley Medical Group and Confluence Health. I'm an oncologist, and for the last three years, I've been serving as the president of the Wenatchee Valley Medical Group. Can I just ask a question, clarification? So just listening to the stipulations of the law, you talked about it being limited to one class, professional services that generate a revenue of over 12 million. Is that only going to be applicable to the Wenatchee Valley Medical Group then?
Well, I, I don't know what the receipts are from the various businesses around town, but it's possible.
It would not apply to Confluence Health, it would apply to the physician group?
It would probably, how you've defined it, but I think it's all medical services, so I'm guessing it would apply to, in my mind, it would apply to Confluence Medical Group and Clemmie Valley Community Health, depending on their gross receipts. It's my understanding that, under the state definition, gross receipts do not include Medicare and Medicaid recipient, or money from Medicare and Medicaid, it's only private pay and insurance. So I don't know how that affects the total amount of gross receipts.
Okay.
But I think Medicare and Medicaid are excluded.
So the $480,000 revenue was from those three organizations potentially? Or we don't know?
We didn't get any information from John Doyle, the CFO, about what it would look like, so we're just doing some rough guesses.
Okay.
I, I really don't know how to figure it out. I mean, you know a little bit more.
Well, I mean, the number must have been generated from some data.
Well, if you did, if you did 300,000 at one and a half, or 300 million at the, at Confluence.
Yeah.
And then the medical group, I think at one point, we were just going to do the hospitals, so I don't know if it's 350 or 450, and I don't really know. Yeah, we're just kind of.
Well, what I, what I thought I'd do, and speak on behalf of the medical group, I do serve on the Confluence Health Board with Frank, and, but, but I, I believe that the legislation may mostly impact the physician group. So I thought it might be helpful maybe to share with you a little bit about the physician group, so that you can put that information in context as you, as you try to make your decision. The Wenatchee Valley Medical Group has approximately 270 physicians in it. We are the affiliated physicians of Confluence Health, and, and are a growing medical group. We do span the whole area of north central Washington, so we have physicians in the medical group that are in Moses Lake, and they go all the way up to Orville. And, and so I think the impact of this potential legislation does impact a great deal of people that live outside the city of Wenatchee. I would venture, and I don't know for sure, but I would venture that the physicians, maybe up to half of the physicians of the Wenatchee Valley Medical Group live outside the city limits of Wenatchee. Our, one of the things I thought might be helpful to you is if I described kind of our, our business model and how this would impact the Wenatchee Valley Medical Group in providing physician services in north central Washington. So we have a vision, mission, as you know, to be the best rural healthcare delivery system in the country, and we think we're approaching that. One of the keys to be the best rural healthcare delivery system in the country is to be able to recruit and retain the top physician talent. And so that's been a goal of ours, and I think we've been accomplishing that. We've been gaining great docs into Wenatchee, great docs into the region to be able to provide that, that care and that service to all the folks here. I live in Wenatchee myself. But to recruit and retain physicians, we have to be competitive on a national market. And we look at national survey data to understand compensation issues and compensation trends for physicians, and that's the market that we have to be competitive in. For example, today, I interviewed two physicians, one was from Salt Lake City, and one was from Tennessee. I think the two other physicians I hired to come to, or interviewed to come to Wenatchee earlier this week, one was from Portland, and one was from Austin, Texas. And so the way we've structured this is that Confluence Health reimburses physicians of the Wenatchee Valley Medical Group for physician services at a fair market value. We have a third party determine what fair market value is, and Confluence Health will pay us for those services at fair market value. So any, and then we go ahead and send that money on to our physicians at fair market value. So really, any money that is taken specifically from Wenatchee Valley Medical Group will directly impact our ability, it will put downward pressure on our ability to recruit and retain top physician talent, because it would, could potentially affect our ability to be competitive in the national marketplace. And again, I think any decision made here doesn't just affect the city of Wenatchee, it really does affect the four counties that we practice medicine in, Grant County, Douglas County, Okanagan County, and Schlain County. Did make a note here, you know, I don't know if the, the council's aware, but the Wenatchee Valley Medical Group is very proud of the community donations we make. We love to be generous. Currently, we budget $250,000 a year to community donations to the counties, and we're proud of that. So we want to contribute, we want to be partners, and certainly, we want to have good paved roads that are safe and, and good for everyone to drive. I'm not sure a very targeted, directed tax at a, hopefully, what you guys consider a valuable commodity, the physicians of the, of the region, is the best way to maybe fund that need. I know that's a decision you all have to make, but, but I, I just think that the message of a targeted, directed tax towards those members of the community that are trying to take care of the community is maybe not the best avenue. And I would ask you to potentially consider that strongly, as you're thinking about the way to fund the pavement needs.
Mitch, I'm going to ask you a question, so, and I'll try to say it in a way that we can understand it. So if you have a bucket over here that's Confluence Health, and then you have a bucket over here that's the doctor group, if we targeted the BNO tax to just say hospitals, the two hospitals.
Mm-hmm.
And took out the medical group, and raised the rate from one and a half to two tenths, is that something that you would say is better than one and a half on all of them?
Well, I could certainly put on my Confluence Health hat, and.
I want, I want you to analyze the difference between the two and help us pick.
Yeah.
Right? Because.
Well, I mean, obviously, I, I don't have to deal with taxing authority issues, but I know that's a tough decision for you all. But I would think one of the premises, you'd want to be very even-handed and not target a certain group, or as was discussed, a limited class that is very narrowly defined. So if you wanted to tax all healthcare facilities, regardless of size, regardless of profit status, nonprofit, for-profit, I mean, that makes sense to me. If you want to target Confluence Health, you know, we heard from our chief financial officer at our Confluence Health Board meeting Tuesday night, that healthcare reimbursement is being targeted at all fronts, and it's a challenge because of a lot of different reasons. One other thing I should mention is that we anticipate a significant rise in the state BNO tax now that the election has generated a fully democratic legislature in Olympia. And we feel like the BNO tax that was held back this last year was because of the, you know, balance of power that you would have there, per se. But I think now with a fully democratic legislature and governor, I think we will be shouldering the burden of a increased BNO tax at the state level, which we already, the Wenatchee Valley Medical Group already pays a significant tax to the state, and that may increase, I don't know, may double, it just depends on who you talk to. So there, there's a lot of, a lot of attacks, if you will, on the healthcare system, not just, you know, not just from payers, but from taxing authorities.
Okay. Any questions for Mitch while we have them?
Well, when you mentioned you believe that's going to increase because of Democratic Party for the BNO tax to the state, does the city of Wenatchee get any of that money?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
No, we don't get any of that money.
Don't get any of it?
We don't. So what, no, so what you have, in essence, just kind of, I'll paint a kind of a broad picture. So on the other side of the mountains, so in the Seattle Everett, Bellingham, Vancouver corridor, there are BNO taxes up and down the entire corridor. But most of them will tax all businesses, right? Dentists, doctors, accountants, the retailers, they, they all pay a city BNO tax, almost every city on the coast. And they haven't really come to eastern Washington much, a little bit here, a little bit there, but they aren't really a eastern Washington-driven thing yet. But I think they're coming, as, as cities try to deal with the pavement issue. So again, BNO taxes are a regular thing, I, I think I agree with our city attorney, we have the right to define these things sort of, any sort of way we want to. What you're seeing across the state in terms of how are other cities doing with pavement management, you'll see the city of Spokane council-matically increase sales tax. They had a vote of the people, they increased sales tax, they have a pavement management program paid for with sales tax, which is great, and it's fine. You know, we're already two tenths higher than our neighbors due to the Town Toyota Center, so, you know, would we go to a vote of the people under some sort of transportation benefit district on sales tax?
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of what you're seeing, I think more communities are using the sales tax element to deal with this than, but, you know, each city gets to kind of decide. I think my reasoning for, for looking at Confluence in particular is the fact that they don't pay property tax, and yet this, the little dentists in town pay property taxes, the chiropractors, the independent eye doctors, if you own your office and you own your building, not only do you pay real property tax, but you pay personal property tax. So they're paying, and they pay BNO tax, and it, so what Confluence pays is the same that everybody else pays, except for they don't pay property tax. And, and as we know, when we're trying to run a city, and, and, you know, I, Confluence Health needs to own the land around the downtown clinic. They need to for financial reasons and for growth. So when they buy the parking lot across the street and the car dealer moves to east Wenatchee, not only do we use the sales tax, but then that property goes off the tax rolls.
Mm-hmm.
Right? We cannot operate a city when its major employer in its downtown core continues to expand and take property off the tax rolls. It ultimately won't work, whether it doesn't work today, or it doesn't work three years from now, that scenario can't work. And so the issue is, how do you even that playing field? And there's lots of ways to do it. You know, the, the committee said we have councilmatic authority to increase property tax, which we can do. But then Confluence wouldn't pay in if you increased property tax on everybody else. So it's really kind of a philosophical thing, are we interested in BNO tax? To what degree? The, the resolution is drafted, so this tax goes only to our road fund, it's not going to go pay anything else, it's going strictly to roads, strictly to pavement, to help Matt and Gary figure out how to pave our streets. And it's not getting to the million dollars that our friends on the committee have asked for, right? I don't think it's getting to that number. This doesn't fix the problem. This isn't one, one yes vote, and now we're done, let's go look at something else, right? This gets us part of the way there. There's probably going to be another part at some point if we, if we get there. So, you know, when I look at it from a holistic standpoint of trying to operate a city, you know, and I'd spend a little bit of time, and you can look at your other major, major employer, so just look at Stemilt, for instance, okay? Stemilt has a huge physical plant, as does Confluence, in both locations. They have roughly the same number of employees, we're running about 4,000, 3,200 FTEs, but about 4,000, lots of revenue. Stemilt last year paid, just on their plant and old station, about 600,000 in property tax. I'm guessing that's going to go to 2 million bucks before they're done, because they're going to have 80 million in personal property, right, for the robotics, and they put another 60 million into the system, right? So they're going to be assessed at $200 million at 12 cents per thousand, do the math, 2.4?
Yeah.
So I'm not saying it's right or wrong, it's just, you know, and they pay sales tax, and they pay, I mean, so it's like, and we don't pick the rules, right? We don't pick who gets to pay tax and who doesn't, or, or at least on the property tax, that's all done in Olympia. So then it's up to us to kind of figure it out. And, and I.
And as I recall in previous discussions, that was one of the reasons we were looking at a targeted group, is because the clinic continues to buy up property around them that they're not paying tax on, that we used to get revenue from those businesses that were there. And if the clinic owns it, we've got no chance of any business coming in and paying sales tax on those properties anymore. So that was why we were looking at a targeted approach rather than a BNO for everybody. It just felt like it was a way to even the playing field a little bit. And you'll have to admit that Wenatchee has become a huge hub for medical treatment. So we're getting people from all over the place coming in and using our roads that, that don't really contribute much to our economy here at all.
Yeah, so we're, we're proud that Wenatchee's become a medical hub, I mean.
I, I think it's great too. I love having great medical care here.
And, and, and I acknowledge that property that's not taxed, doesn't give you that direct revenue, but it does, having, having some of Confluence Health properties in Wenatchee does facilitate many families to live and work in Wenatchee City, and get revenue sources from all of those, those families that are, are here, whether through their own personal property taxes, or them just having economic activity in the city. So I don't know if it's a fully lost amount of money, because that certain property is not taxed. And again, and I just emphasized, the Wenatchee Valley Medical Group has one budget, Confluence Health has one budget, a decision made here affects the budgets of not Wenatchee, but four county area healthcare service delivery.
So at this point, we're not obviously taking any sort of action tonight, we're going to bring this back, if the council thinks we should bring it back at our December, what day is that meeting?
7th.
December 7th. As part of, we'll probably do a public hearing, Steve, is it required to do a public hearing for this?
It doesn't require it, it's probably a good idea.
So I think we'll basically plan on having a public hearing, Mitch, we'll take regular testimony for the record.
And, and is there any way we can get the actual numbers that this would?
I'm assuming that maybe perhaps between now and December 6th, that the folks at Confluence will be able to help with that. I think, I've talked with John Doyle, their Chief Financial Officer, he is. He is, it's easy to do state B and O tax when all of your businesses are in the state. It's a little harder to figure out how much happens in the city when you have businesses in Moses Lake and Tenasket and Oroville and East Wenatchee, and you have clinics lots of other places. It's not quite as easy in their accounting system to come up with those sorts of numbers. Maybe he'll be able to do that for us.
I can work with John to get some numbers.
Yeah.
For me to understand whether this class is really the whole system or just the physician group. I don't know if there's a way we can...
And we can talk about it. I think it's drafted in a way that it's going to get both right now. Is that right, Steve?
Yeah, it's pretty broad. I mean, we tried to hit all medical providers, so that would include doctors.
So right now, we'll get both, the way it's...
Yeah. I kind of interpret it as kind of narrow, not broad, the way it's defined now. But we can look at that.
Okay. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And there is a copy of the...
Yeah, I'll grab that.
All right. So let's knock out a couple of action items before we take a quick break. So Deanne, welcome back.
The last one.
You used to be a regular attendee here.
At least in November, it used to be.
Yeah.
Deanne McDaniel, accountant. I'm here to bring ordinance 2017-26, Resolution 2017-56 regarding purchasing. We were having a lot of new staff. They don't know what they necessarily need to do when they go through and make purchases. And our purchasing policy wasn't really clear or provided enough guidance to people. And so Brad asked to go through and have our purchasing policy looked at. And in the process, I went through and looked at city code, which is quite old.
Someone's going back to 1893, Jim. So I remember a couple of years ago, you said we should look at our code every so often.
Yeah.
Most of the code that is being removed was drafted in 1907 to 1909. And there is one section that was drafted in 1893. There is a little bit that's on the financial side of things that when I was going through and looking at stuff that just needed to be updated because it was too restrictive or not appropriate anymore. And then that's the ordinance. And then the resolution is just drafting the, or approving the purchasing policy. And this is going through and giving staff, basically your directors, additional authority. Instead of coming to council for some things, it may be going to the director or to the mayor to sign, as long as it's in budget or been in a finance department-approved project that wasn't in the budget. And then it's going through and increasing the limits of what a director can authorize. It's also going through and defining and giving the authorities, basically, because Matt's probably the only one, what is considered an emergency procurement and where we could go through. Say, we go through and have a building that had a major leak, and it cost $150,000. There are bid requirements that we have to go through and do. Because it's leaking, it's doing it in the IT department on our computers. Matt or his designee can go through and say, "We need to get somebody here. I know this person is a good roofer. I'm going to talk to him," rather than following the normal city or state bid requirements.
That's kind of the emergency procurement provisions you have in here. Okay.
So I don't know what you want to hear. It's there for you to look at.
The finance committee did go through this a couple of different times. So, and kind of set up the kind of the boundaries that we thought were comfortable for the department heads to have.
Seeing as how it took me an hour to comprehend this...
Oh, my God.
How many people in the city does this affect? And how many people in the city need to know exactly what's stated in here so that they understand what they're doing? Or is this more for people like Matt, and he can just make sure his employees are following based on his understanding of this?
Well, that kind of depends on where you're at. If you're someone that's going through and doing normal purchasing and stuff like that, the small items, this will go through and let you know what you need to do and what the procedure is. It gives more general guidance when you're going through and doing a contract or something like that. So we have, we're going to have tonight, where we're hoping with utility assistance program that we're going to have a contract with a provider that can go through and do the review of the applications for customers. That contract now can be signed with Brad instead of having coming back to council because of the limits that are there. It provides some of the guidelines or some of the ideas of what you need to put in and stuff like that.
And I got the flavor of that. But again, you know, simplifying. I'm just trying to figure out how many people within the city are really going to have to understand this. Or is it just Matt? And maybe Matt can shed some light on it.
Probably 20 people.
Yes.
20?
That's my guess.
Okay.
Every department's got their own purchasing people. Then Matt's got a bunch of them.
Right now, the way it works is purchasing happens by a lot of different people in Public Works. It's usually the supervisors, the administrative assistants, their assistants. So it affects probably 15 people, I would say, in Public Works that actually do requisitions, put in purchase orders, go get bids on things, maybe more than that. But yeah, so Public Works is a large group. We are, actually, we just met on it today, looking at trying to narrow that down to maybe like a purchasing-type person that did more.
And you've gone through this, and you're comfortable with it?
Yeah, we've worked together on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Deanne circulated it widely so that all the other departments that have employees that do purchasing have reviewed it, commented.
That was going to be one of my questions. So thank you.
Sure.
I guess I have several questions here, and I'll try to make it as quick as I can. Part of this is probably going to, I guess, be more directed at Steve in terms of the legal side of it. As I have read through this, the policy manual, I think, is, quite frankly, is a very good piece of work. I mean, you have very clear guidelines, very specific ways in which you're going to proceed and do it. My, I guess my concern, as I read through this, is not so much the application side of it, but really the policy side of it. If we pass this tonight, basically, a substantial part of chapter one goes away.
Yes.
Okay. I assume there was a reason why that was, you know, originally, chapter one existed. Now it's going to be gone. And what we have now is a policy manual. And Steve, this is, I guess, the question for you. If we pass this tonight, does the adoption, does the policy manual become code?
No.
So it's basically a set of guidelines for staff to use. So that then, then my second question then is, does this now exist? If you look up chapter one, the policy manual won't be there, as I would, I assume. Is that correct? Is there a need for the public to be able to see this? Right now, if chapter one gives us, these are the guidelines. I mean, outdated as they were, you know, going back, talking about the commission and all this kind of stuff, a long, long past. But it still was a set of rules and guidelines and so forth. And as I look at it, code is law. You have to. Policy manuals are, we recommend you do. And there's, to me, there's a very big difference in that. So I don't disagree with the policy manual and what that is. I think that's a really good deal. I guess my concern is, does the public need to have access to that information other than, you know, having to come down to city hall and asking somebody to dig out the policy manual? I mean, is, if I'm a contractor, is there a public need to have access to this information? Which it looks like at this point, the public's been cut completely out of this.
It is a public record.
Yeah.
If that's what you're, I mean, the public certainly could have access to it.
And on our document center, the new public records program that Tammy's put into place, all of our resolutions and ordinances are available. And this is an exhibit of the resolution. So it's all searchable, available by public.
I think Jim's question, if I could paraphrase, is, should our code somehow mention the fact that there's these policies and procedures and include them there so they can, so it's pretty clear when you look at this, you need to go look at something else?
Should our code reference it?
Should our code reference this policy?
At least it's by reference, yeah.
Yeah. Asking that of our city attorney.
Yeah, well, should it or could it? I mean, that's kind of a discretionary thing. I mean, I view this, this is a guideline for the city staff to follow in their purchasing policy. So we don't necessarily, you know, it doesn't need to be codified. It doesn't mean we can't reference it in our code where appropriate.
Yes, Matt.
So, yeah, sorry. But yeah, a lot of the stuff in chapter one right now, it's, we put it in all of our bid documents. It's actually, the state law requires us to have most of that stuff that's out, that was outdated, that we would pretty much override it when we made our bid documents at the contractors and bidders had to follow. But a lot of that stuff, it, before you, I'm guessing before you went out for a project, you didn't have a big, thick package that went with it. You just had to follow the Wenatchee city code, right? So now it's, you know, the funding agency has their rules. The city has their rules. Every, every agency has their rules. Where in the past, when that code was written, I'm assuming that they just followed that, the city code. And that's how you purchased. And that contractor probably only worked with the city Wenatchee.
So our bidding contracts are basically taking the place of the city code.
Yes. And this section is not being followed. Some of it's illegal. Some of it is being replaced by state law that I don't know was there back when this was formed. The state goes through and tells us what we can do, say, for a small works roster. They go through and tell us how much we can go through and purchase and everything else like that. And no matter what our code says, we have to follow the RCW. They have precedent. So I guess if we go through and have to follow the state law, and then we have to go through and look to see what's in our RCWs, or not the RCWs, but the city's code, and then have to go through and look to see if there's something else in the policy, just trying to eliminate one other source that could go through and trip us up because we go through and say, "Well, you didn't do this. You didn't go through..." I don't know. If you go through and say that we have to, in our city code, we had to go through. It's state law to do minority and women business. But if we go through and say we have to have a public comment period for something, it just, it drags our stuff down. It makes it so it's harder to do our job, takes it longer to do our job. If we have a policy that is approved by council and is only going to be changed by council resolution, we have the ability to do that just as much as we do in the code. It just doesn't take as much effort to do it.
Okay. Jim, any more questions?
No, I, yeah. I, I guess it just struck me that there was a, in terms of transparency of, you know, process, transparency of government. It struck me that all of a sudden, the whole section of the code goes away. And then, again, I'm not questioning that a lot of it was irrelevant and illegal or whatever. It's the principle that I'm looking at, not the functionality of it. And I just want to make sure we don't, we're not moving into a position where people are operating in the dark, as it were.
Yes, so I don't, we're not, I don't think they're trying to...
I'm not suggesting that they're trying, Steve. Don't get me wrong here. I'm just, you know, it's the appearance of, a lot of times, it's the appearance of evil kind of thing. You know, it's not intent, but it's, why don't we see this? Or we used to see this, or whatever. That was my only concern there. I accept your explanation. Thanks.
Any other questions for Deanne while we have her here?
I had one question on the ordinance, page two of the ordinance, which I think is 17 of our packet, particularly section five, dealing with the designation of the public depository. I seem to remember the last time that we, a number of years ago, we went through a request for proposal process and ended up selecting our depository based on some fairly specific criteria. And I'm, by moving from the council to the finance director, and it's not a reflection on staff, I'm, I'm left wondering, does that same criterion, that same criteria that we use, is that still going to be used? Are we going to find? And I remember in that process, a number of smaller institutions were trying to get a, get a cut of the action, so to speak. And we weren't willing to do it because of the minimum sizes we want to maintain. Are we going to end up putting our finance director in a position where he or she is going to be invited out for coffee and donuts by everyone wanting to get a little piece of the action? And we end up with several depositories that we're trying to manage versus one?
That is something that I'd never even thought of.
But I will tell you this, Mark, on a bit of a different, the finance committee, we talked this idea about, well, should we go out for bid on small contracts? For instance, our janitorial contract. And it's like, okay, so we're going to go for a public bid. We like our current janitor. They do a nice job. Their fees are reasonable. And all of a sudden, we're going to give the keys to the city to someone who we don't know, who bid, who got it, to save $32.15 and put your staff... So there's a certain part of running the city that is a little bit of who's comfortable with who and how you've been doing it. Is it worth the switch? I don't disagree with, on occasion, going down on the banking side and seeing what things are going on. But there's also the other side of just trying to run a business and not get bogged down a lot.
I, well, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that when we did that and we selected our current depository, I'm very comfortable with the process that we used.
Right.
And that person. And I'm not comfortable with, had we selected several others that were not, that did not achieve that same criteria that we established.
I see what you're saying. Yeah. Yeah. You're seeing that maybe someone would pick someone who isn't as good as our current depository.
Yes, as large, or has the assets that...
Right.
Yeah. That's all.
So would you rather have that as selected by finance committee?
Well, I was thinking more like selected by the finance director and confirmed by the council.
Okay, you want the whole council? Okay.
Why not?
So it'd just be, as selected by the finance director, comma, and confirmed by the council, or whatever wording we use also. We use that in some of our employment stuff. Comma, as the most qualified and cost-effective service provider.
Okay.
And confirmation doesn't mean that we're doing an RFP process or anything like that. It's just it makes it public as to where our depositories are.
Right.
There's a record.
So I would suggest if we were to make a motion to adopt, that you would put language in that particular sentence to indicate that, such that the city attorney can then make work. Any other discussion for Deanne while we have her? Mark, are you interested in trying to make a motion that would make that happen?
The first motion is for ordinance 2017-26, amending and repealing, and this is to, a motion to approve ordinance 2017-26, amending and repealing portions of the Wenatchee city code as it relates to chapter 1.10, city finances, chapter 1.24, surety bond, chapter 1.28, city warrants, chapter 1.30, claims and obligations, with the following suggested amendment that in section 1.30.020, the proposed language be amended to the fact
the fact that the depository would be selected by the finance director and confirmed by the council as the most qualified, et cetera. Um, and, uh, chapter one point five six, small works roster.
Second.
Motion by council member Kula, second by council member Bailey, to adopt ordinance number twenty, two thousand seventeen dash twenty-six, amending and repealing all of those certain portions of the Wenatchee City, City Code with the changes that the, uh, depository be confirmed by the city council. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose? Motion carries. And then we'll need the other resolution adopted.
Your honor, I make a motion that, uh, resolution number two thousand seventeen dash fifty-six be adopted. This amends and restates purchasing policy and procedures.
Second.
Motion by council member Kula, second by council member Markhart, to adopt resolution two thousand seventeen dash fifty-six, amending and restating purchasing policies and procedures. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose? Motion carries. Let's just take a, my, five-minute break, and then we'll re-adjourn at six-thirty. I need to stand up.
Do you stretch? Uh, we're on a roll now.
All right. Thanks, Deanne, for staying for one extra, one little break.
Well, this one is really Denise's, but.
Okay. Hi Denise, how are you?
Hi, good.
So, uh, next item on our agenda, item B is regarding the utility assistance program. So you got Denise and Deanne with us?
Um, earlier this year, council approved, um, rate increases for sewer, and they are going to start January first, twenty eighteen, and go up six percent over several years. And during that rate, rate discussion, um, there was concern, um, about our lower-income citizens. And, uh, we were concerned about how that would, the rate increases would impact them. So, in response to that, um, we have developed a utility assistance program to kind of be more of a safety net for folks that, um, are going to be impacted more, um, with, with their household income and their household expenses. I have a chart that's part of the packet, and I wanted to show you, um, just year-to-year increase. Our, our rates are actually going to increase about twenty, twenty dollars, thirty, a little bit over thirty dollars a year, if you're outside the city. Um, so this, this program would help ease that, kind of transition people into those higher rates. And over the course of the rate increases through twenty twenty-four, rates are actually going to go up about a hundred and seventy dollars a year for sewer. So.
A hundred and seventy dollars for the entire cycle, not for year, sorry.
Sorry, I was gonna say, wait a minute.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry. So the year-to-year increase is about twenty dollars a year. And over the course of, from twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-four, a hundred and seventy, seventy-one is going to be the, the total increase. So, when we were looking at funding for, um, the program, um, rates actually are going to fund the first hundred thousand. And we were trying to find, uh, a, a point where it would make sense to be able to help more citizens. And so the proposal with the ordinance is a hundred dollars per household per year. And a qualifying single-family residence, uh, we would use, uh, the eighty-eight percent of the section eight housing area median income, which is really similar to our senior disabled low-income program, and it would be based on household size. Uh, and then our customers that are already receiving the discount that we provide through the city, that we manage through the city, they would not be eligible for this other program. So it's one or the other. So someone who would not necessarily meet the disability or the age requirements for our program here at the city could go to Columbia Community Action and apply through Community Action.
Is the reduction in the rate the same for the senior disability?
It would not be the same. The senior disabled gets a fifty percent discount.
Okay.
So they pay fifty percent of what the standard rate is for everyone else. This is just the hundred dollars.
So in essence, for those that qualify that are between senior and disabled and in your little economic with lower incomes, we basically are going to pay for their first two months of sewer, right? In essence, with this hundred-dollar credit.
Yes.
Which, quite frankly, more than offsets the increase in year one.
Yes, it would.
For those that qualify, then their actual sewer rate will go down next year, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the ordinance actually states that, um, we will look at this again in three years. We are going to ask, um, our customers to help, to donate. So we are, we are planning to announce to our customers at, we're going to do, we're going to do inserts in our bills, um, beginning of January, a lot, allowing them to, or inviting them to donate, um, to the program. So there may be additional funding on top of what rates will fund the first hundred thousand. So we're hoping over time that, you know, the program will be able to expand even, and, and maybe help with other utilities as well. But right now, the focus is on sewer because we know that that's coming for sure.
So, if I might, so in addition to the inserts, will our, the style of our statements change similar to how Schlen PUD has a line as you're going down? You can do SNAP and you can do helping hand?
I think we're going to put a field on, right now, the plan is to put a field on our bills. We pre-print our bills for a year or so. We're working on a template that would actually have that field that would be separate from the bill itself. It would be on the payment stub, the remittance stub. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
There would be a field on there, just so that our staff know that that's clearly what they're, what they're asking for versus what they want to pay towards their utility bill. So we only want to make sure that that's defined on their bill stub, their payment stub.
Can you tell?
How does that work for electronic payments? So, you know, I get my bill, I look at the amount, I plug it into my bank, and my bank sends you a check, and that's all you get from me is a check. But if I wanted to put extra amount in there, how would that get designated?
Is your, um, I don't, I don't do auto pay on my bank. Does your bank allow you to do two separate lines?
There's a memo field, but I don't know if that memo gets printed on the check or not.
Do you know?
Well, we're going to have, actually, uh, we're, we're going to call it a dummy utility account. So it's, we're going to hack, have an actual utility billing account that's going to be a separate account number. So if you wanted to set up your bill pay and send a check to that account number, we would know.
As a separate account?
As a separate check.
Yes, it's a separate utility billing account. So if, if you wanted to use your bill pay, it would come through that report, and it would show that account number, and we would know exactly.
And that will all be explained on this insert?
We would be happy to make sure that's explained.
Which I will look as a PDF.
Yes, yes.
Has it? Okay. Perfect.
But you don't expect that right away. This isn't going to happen until middle of next year in terms of the billing process, when we're going to see it on the bills.
I.
You said you printed the year's worth of bills, so I don't know.
Yeah, we, we have stock, but, I mean, we can, we can actually have our vendor print, print our stock fairly early in the year.
Okay.
So I would hate to announce a program and then have all these customers call because there's nothing explained on their bill. So initially, we thought we would just have our vendor add, manually add a field.
Okay.
Onto the stub. So it could be there right away, actually.
Perfect.
That way, when they see this field, there's an explanation in the letter, why, why is it on our stub?
Do we have a verification system in place?
Yes, we.
For folks to show that they're low-income?
Yes. We are going to work with Community Action. Um, I have developed, uh, an application form, and, uh, exhibit A, I think, was part of your packet. So we're going to, um, work with them to make sure that they understand what those parameters are, to, to the, to the policies. There's going to actually be some policies and a checklist that we're going to provide the, uh, Community Action with, so that they can evaluate each customer the same way.
So they'll need check stubs.
Okay.
Bank statements, things like that, to go through and provide proof.
There's, there's, if you see the, the application actually has a laundry list of different types of income that we tried to think about, you know, not just based on the tax return, but based upon all types of income. Thank you.
Now, the, the, the hundred thousand dollars, it, that, as I look at the numbers here, that, that basically funds the, the discount, and that comes out of.
That's a part of the rates that are established right there.
Right, comes out of the sewer fund.
Right, yes.
Uh, then the other fifteen thousand for the, uh, Community Action, that, that, that's covering their administrative processing of, of each of those.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
People are going to Community Action Council already for their section eight vouchers and other sorts of programs.
Any low-income program does their thing through there.
Okay. And then they, they can qualify, uh, for the length of the, yeah, how, how far we run this out here, twenty twenty-four, so that, so that they, technically, they could get it every year from now till eight, twenty twenty-four?
It's just like our senior disabled low-income here at the city. We have the, you know, the discounts available, but they have to reapply every year.
Yeah, every, every year.
So it's going to be, it's going to be like that.
Potentially, they could have it for the whole, the whole cycle.
And the only reason we have the three years is to kind of do an evaluation of the needs and how much stuff there are, you know, because I don't know how long people will jump on the, on, on board and stuff, whether we're, the hundred thousand is sufficient, or we're going to come back to the finance committee and report on it. But the three years was to go through and say, it'll have a thorough evaluation in three years as to how the program works, and if we need more money, and where it's going to come from.
But there's a carryover if it's not used the first.
Right. If, if the hundred thousand is not used, or we get more denunciations, it's, the hundred thousand and the denunciations will carry over to the subsequent year. So it'll keep building on itself.
I think that's why we wanted the three-year review. If the account wasn't holding its own, we needed to increase it. If it was, have a huge surplus, we needed to decrease it.
Yeah, we want to, and gotta be a little bit careful, because we go into bond market, asking for, and so they're looking at our rates, they're going to look at this program, so that can't be three hundred thousand, right? So we really have to limit.
Yeah.
The amount we, we need to participate in. Hopefully, we get a thousand people and, and we use it all up. So it'll be interesting to see.
Yeah.
Uh, as we put the program in effect, how many people take advantage of it.
Good. Excellent.
Any other discussion for Deanne or Denise?
We're asking for approval of resol-, uh, ordinance two thousand seventeen twenty-three, and resolution two thousand seventeen fifty-one.
Your honor, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty seventeen dash twenty-three, amending chapter nine point zero two point zero one zero, WCC, adding a new.
WCC, adding a new subsection, seven Utility Assistance Program.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt ordinance 2017-23, adding a new subsection for the Utility Assistance Program. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now the resolution?
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2017-51, adopting the Utility Assistance Program Guidelines relative to WCC 9.02.010-7.
Okay.
Got a motion by Councilmember Huffaker, a second by Councilmember Asparza, to adopt Resolution 2017-51, excuse me, adopting Utility Assistance Program. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I know this process of increasing sewer rates and then making you guys put together a assistance program's been a lot of work. But thanks to both you ladies for doing that and getting it through so we can have it adopted for January when the rates go up. So thank you for your work.
You're welcome. Our pleasure.
All right. Next item, Old Station Sanitary Sewer Extension Phase One. Jeremy, how are you this evening?
Doing well. How about yourself?
Good, thank you.
Well, good evening, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, here, as you stated, regarding the Old Station Sewer Expansion Project. We have had multiple meetings with Department of Transportation, Shalane County, County PUD, Port Authority, or, Port of Shalane, sorry, regarding the work that's going to be going on out there as part of the expansion, lift station installation, forced main installation and such. When we originally put this out for consultant selection, we knew that there was going to be some level of geotechnical investigation that was going to be necessary for this project, but we didn't know the extent of it. Now that we've got the alignment and locations and a little bit of coordination done, we put together a scope of what the potholing and drilling activities would be. And some of that was a little bit beyond what we would be able to do in-house with just a Vactor truck. So we made the decision to allow RH2 to coordinate directly with the drilling companies. They have an archaeologist on staff to be behind the drill rig and assess any kind of cultural artifacts that hopefully will not be found as part of the exploration process. And there's obviously a cost associated with that. It's a little bit more than what we would typically just approve in-house. So I'm bringing this before use to get authorization to sign the consultant supplement agreement number one.
Most of this drilling to take place near the Haran Block and kind of that sort of area where we planned the lift station? Or is it gonna be on like Chatham Hill and out in Sunny Slope? What are you thinking?
A little bit of both. We have the lift station site, which is south end of Shalane, or, sorry, south end of Haran. We also have two boring locations where we're going to actually go across SR2 and SR285. So we need holes on either side of that to find out exactly what we're going to be looking at when we try to directional bore underneath the highways. And then the rest of them, we've got some spots along the trail that we want to do. We've got stuff inside of Chatham Hills that's just the potholing.
I just thought we were putting in sewer pipe. I didn't realize we had to do all the rest of it. Show you why I'm not an engineer.
It's a fun process.
All right. Any other discussion with Jeremy? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move that City Council authorize the mayor to sign a consultant supplemental agreement number one on behalf of the city with RH2 Engineering, Inc., for Geotechnical Investigation Services for the Old Station Sanitary Sewer Extension Phase One, project number 1718.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Markhart, to authorize the mayor's signature on the consultant agreement with RH2 Engineering for geotechnical work with respect to our sewer extension project in Old Station. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Jeremy, excuse me, just real quick, when do you expect to start this process?
Well, actually, the portion of it is already done. In order to keep the project on track and make sure that this happens before any of the snows fall, we went ahead and authorized RH2. They had, they have budget available to continue work. It's not like this would be stopping them from work, but this is just making sure that the funds are there as we continue out through the rest of the project. We have Chatham Hills done. They've done some of the borings. The question marks that remain are the work along the trail. And I believe there's one boring on PUD property for one of the proposed lift station sites that still has to be done. They're going to be right near a couple of high-voltage power lines, and PUD has a little bit of concern about that. So we're dealing with that.
Good. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thanks.
All right. Next item on our agenda is McKittrick Street Engineering. Gary Owen.
Evening again, Mayor, Council. I'm Gary Owen, City Engineer. I have to one-up Jerry and go for supplement number eight on this project with RH2 Engineering. This project actually predates my employ here with the city of Wenatchee even. This project is a little bit like one I came to you with that we, we just finished up at Crawford and Mission Street, where it's grown a lot since it was originally conceived. This one started out as about a $600,000 project, five, $600,000, I think. And, and now it's, it's approaching $3 million. But for good reason, to keep it consistent with a new North Wenatchee Corridor Master Plan, relatively new, it's getting old now, and, and, and the North Wenatchee Redevelopment Plan. So we've added a lot of money to it. We, we've had RH2 employed for some time in the preliminary engineering and the right-of-way acquisition. We've got a lot of right-of-way money, federal money obligated to the project right now. We're in the process of nearly making offers to the four property owners, basically on the four corners of the project. And what, what this, what this supplement does is it, it, it's, it's, basically, it's backfilling money that we've already spent, kind of similar to the question that you just asked. We've got a contract with RH2. What we've been doing by virtue of adding the additional right-of-way work is spending some of our engineering money. So this is putting enough engineering money back in it and the additional right-of-way work to get this project all the way to a contract out the door advertised and, and ready to build a, a new signal.
And last I talked to folks, they were thinking that was gonna be a 2019 project. Is that still kind of the thoughts?
That's still what we're thinking right now is probably 2019. We've got a couple of businesses to relocate and.
Yeah, it's, it's just a quick comment. Just Steve and I were talking at the breakfast the other morning. As long as I've been on the council, which is 10 years at this point, and this was, and predated, predated that. And we just kind of keep wondering how, how much longer we're gonna keep signing supplements before we actually build something out there. Kind of the.
If not for the.
Hammer the, hammer the last stakes and pick tape on it might just, you know, be an idea there too. But is there, and I guess the, on a more serious note, is there, in all of this, you know, basically escalation of the cost from roughly half a million to almost 3 million, how much is that, or has it increased our part of the contribution all that much? Are we getting this? Most of this covered by grants and all those kind of things? Or are we, are we out of pocket, I guess, what I guess I'm asking here as opposed to what's being covered by the grants? Because originally, that half a million and.
Yeah, I.
We, we keep getting enough grants to do this. I mean, we haven't spent any of this money, the original 500,000, or have we?
Oh, no, we have. Everything that we spend today has been reimbursable, federal money at 86.5%.
Okay.
And we will continue at 86.5%. It may go all the way through to the end of the project and stay 86.5% federally funded, depending on the cost of the right-of-way and how we come out of the right-of-way phase and the cost of the construction phase. So we're limited on how much federal money that we have. Right now, with our cost estimate for all the engineering, the right-of-way acquisition, and the construction of the signal and associated work, it looks like we're, we're nearer to about 85% overall, totally funded. But right now, the, I'm seeing the, the right-of-way work probably coming in at less, the acquisition costs less than what we estimated. So I'm guessing we're gonna be between 85 and 86.5% funded with federal money on this project by the time it's complete.
We had, what, a million at the start, and then I went to the Transportation Council. We got an allocation from a different pot to get us to up over 2 million, I think, 2.2, 2.3, something like that. So as it grew because of the fires and the rest of it, they said, yeah, yeah, take some money from some other, they want to see this done too, right? And so we did a pretty good job. There's obviously some city contribution into it.
So we're probably gonna be in, into this thing for about a half a mil?
A little, yeah, a little bit more, yeah. All right. Any other questions for Gary? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for City Council to approve and authorize the mayor to execute supplement number eight with RH2 Engineering Incorporated, providing for additional design and right-of-way acquisition services for the McKittrick Street and Wenatchee Avenue Signal Project Number 0623.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Poyer, to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on supplement number eight with RH2 Engineering for some additional design work for the McKittrick Street Intersection Project. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brooklyn, gonna do a grant.
Hey, Brooklyn Holton Housing and Community Planner.
Just for the rest of the council, at the employee breakfast the other morning, she got an award for the Wellness Committee. I've seen her in a boot, a food boot, and in her arm sleeve.
I'm self-taught, as I told the mayor at the, also at the Wellness Committee. It's all self-learned. You learn a lot through experience, just remember that. So this is the, an amendment to the 1422 grant. This will be going into the fourth year of that grant, my third year of being a part of it. Each year, they provide around $10,000. This year, it's exactly $10,000, just like last year, for me to be providing staff time and then also any types of training or goods and services related to the tasks that are listed. I put them right in the agenda report, so you could easily find them. They use the same contract and just keep changing the color of the amendment. So it's not necessarily the easiest contract to filter through. But this is largely, or mostly related to the Complete Streets work. This was what funded the policy that was adopted in 2016, and then largely the pedestrian master plan. So those are the two large tasks. The other ones are fairly small, and they're just around mobile transportation, physical activity around increasing walking, and non-motorized accessibility and mobility for the city of Wenatchee. And then we've actually had a lot of, I personally have had a lot of contacts from outside cities and areas I've never heard of around our Complete Streets policy. And so one of the additions.
You get for getting an award for it.
Yeah, yeah, well.
How'd you get that?
I know. People I don't even know. I don't know how they got my information either. But one of the things that was requested was to work with providing other Complete Streets Workshop at an actual county level, so providing a county-level North Central Washington Complete Streets Workshop. So that's one of the new additions. And then I've assisted with other Complete Streets Workshops, but they would like me to lead. And so I'm working with East Wenatchee right now. I'm doing one for East Wenatchee and the kind of East Wenatchee Douglas County area, so.
All right.
Very good.
Well, thanks, Brooklyn, for doing that. It's nice to be getting reimbursed from Grant County, so.
Any questions or anything?
So I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I will make a motion for the City Council to approve the mayor's signature on the 1422 Grant Agreement Amendment Number Three between Grant County Health District and the City of Wenatchee.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Asparza, second by Councilmember Markhart, to approve the mayor's signature on the 1422 Grant Agreement Amendment Three between Grant County and the City of Wenatchee, Grant County Health District. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brooklyn. Captain Reinfield. Agreement between the Wenatchee Police Department and Wenatchee Valley College.
Yes, sir. So, Mayor Koontz and members of the council. Edgar Reinfield, the Administrative Bureau Commander and Captain at Wenatchee Police Department. What I have tonight is a long-running project between Wenatchee Valley College and the Wenatchee Police Department that is designed to help the college come into compliance with a very large amount of federal and state law. It's all over the place. The core of it is the Clery Act. It's, I believe, part of Title IX in U.S. Code. What we're seeking today is approval of this MOU as a concept for signature by Chief Crown. That's something I failed to put on the council agenda report. It's not a signature for the mayor, but for the chief of police. This agreement is modeled upon other agreements in the state of Washington between other community colleges and universities and their local police departments. The goal is to ensure rapid reporting of type-one crimes, or, excuse me, part-one, not type-one crimes, to the police department so they can be investigated and so that investigation is carried out in a cooperative manner with the college so they can make appropriate reporting regarding their legal obligations to federal and state.
Has this already been happening, but this is just formalizing it? I mean, have we already been working with them on issues when there is a problem?
We work with them on issues, but this is a big change in that it creates a more collaborative approach like we see with CPS and dealing with crimes against children, or with Adult Protective Services and crimes against the elderly. This rolls the college in as a partner so that they can conduct a current investigation under their own practices and take care of this. This is not just for students. This is for students, staff, and vendors. It applies to anyone who touches the college in an official manner. So if the crimes occur on the college campus, they have requirements that have to be met that are not currently being met by current practice.
Okay. That's, that's, that's kind of what my curiosity was. So this is new procedures for them as well?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Can you tell me about this under Section 10? Says that the Wenatchee Valley College agrees to offer training to the Wenatchee PD?
So a big part of this is just the understanding. We don't understand their reporting requirements at all.
Oh, okay.
Because we, we are not familiar with this, with this part of law. So training us to understand what they need and what they are obligated to report will make it easier for our detectives. Realistically, this will fall heavily upon the detective sergeant, the crimes against persons detective, and then the remaining detectives who pick up the crimes against persons cases on a secondary basis when the crimes against persons detective is fully tasked.
Thank you. I thought for, for a minute there, I was like, shouldn't the police department be training them?
All right. Any questions for Captain Reinfield? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for City Council to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Wenatchee Police Department and Wenatchee Valley College.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Koulas, to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Wenatchee Police Department and Wenatchee Valley College. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Captain.
Thank you, sir.
McKittrick Street, right of my purchase, Steve King.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Steve King, Economic Development Director. This is a, a follow-up to an action the council took a while back establishing a, a budget for purchase of right-of-way and the property owned from stemilt growers, by stemilt growers. And we're hopeful that we might get to a point where we could close this deal during the holidays. And so we're asking for your authorization for the mayor to sign any settlement agreements that may happen, given we may not have a council meeting. May or may not happen, but we're, we're striving for it.
And just for the record, I was gonna report this at the mayor's discussion, but we did receive our Curb grant this morning. We went and testified in front of the Curb Board, and we got 900 and.
173,000 and change, yeah.
973,000, $130 loan, 850 payback for this particular property acquisition.
Excellent.
Yeah, so it is mostly all funded. We are working hard on the right-of-way process, which does take some time. And we're, it would be a really good thing if something happened between now and the end of the year, we get this signed. That's a sign that we made some great progress. The, the issues aren't between us and stemilt. That's done. It's the process, the federal process that's.
It's part of a public-private partnership, and that's challenging to work through, yeah.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to sign supplement agreements with stemilt growers for the purchase of right-of-way not to exceed the project budget of 1.25 million.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Harold, to authorize the mayor to sign settlement agreements with stemilt growers for the purchase of right-of-way without not to exceed budget of 1.25 million dollars. Discussion?
Steve, on the, every time I look at, look at this map, I, I see something different. Now, enlighten me here, on, on the, the McKittrick Street obviously runs into. Now, enlighten me here, on, on the, the McKittrick Street, obviously runs into the railroad, and that's our future underpass. And probably, are we going to have an at-grade for a while until we get the underpass, or is it just going to end on both sides of the railroad till we get the underpass?
It will likely, it's a good question, it's not for sure, but we'll likely stay as a, wait, we'll likely keep, have the right-of-way there until we get an underpass. We probably will not do an at-grade unless we don't get federal funding in the next few cycles, which in case, then we might go back to an at-grade. But, for right now-
Right now, it's, it's just a dead end on each side, okay.
Yep.
And if you go down there, the, if you look at the map on your council packet, where it looks like there's a road going through a building, that building is gone. They have removed that side of the building, and they're shoring that up for the Diamond Foundry. So, the portion of the building that needs to be removed for right-of-way is actually gone. And they are actively working hard. I think Diamond Foundry expects to be here sometime in April, so.
Great.
All right, so, we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Mr. Posenjack.
Temporary loaning of cash. Mayor, council?
Brad Posenjack, Finance Director. I'm presenting Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash fifty-seven, authorizing the temporary lending of cash from the General Fund. There are two funds that frequently need loans from the General Fund to make cash flow needs. It's the CDBG Entitlement Fund and the Police Station General Obligation Bond Fund. This is a resolution that I believe you do every year, and it is kind of an administrative procedure to make sure we legally cross the Ts and dot the Is to have, allow the General Fund to make those loans. So, the, the CDB Entitlement Fund, it is a federal funds-
Reimbursement.
Revenue reimbursement fund, and so, it, they have to spend the money first before they get the money, so they need some cash flow from the General Fund to help them out there. The Police Station General Obligation Bond Fund, there's just a timing difference between when the bond payments have to be made and when the property tax levy comes in, and so, that every year has a, has a little window where they, they need some, a little bit of cash. So, I think we're talking about, right now, I think the CDBG Fund is needing to borrow about twenty thousand dollars right now, and the Police Station Bond Fund needs just a six, seven thousand, and so, or, it will need that. So, this is just kind of an administrative procedure, so we don't get dinged by the state auditors for not having done this when we're, when we're loaning.
Remind me, is there a maximum amount that the General Fund can loan out?
Whatever its fund balance is. It, it could technically just give the money, because the general, general funds can be used for any, anything that the city Wenatchee does. So, the funds could technically just be given to cover the cash flow needs and, and not actually loaned. In reality, all of our cash is all sitting in one big account, and we're not really moving it back and forth between these funds.
Just an accounting trick.
It's, but we've got all these separate funds that-
Devs and credits, yeah.
For reporting purposes, sometimes in these separate little buckets, one goes negative for just a short amount of time, and so, for reporting purposes, we have to say that the General Fund was covering that difference. So, that's what this resolution is doing, is just, is just the, making sure that we've got it documented that that's what was happening, even though all our cash is in one big bank account. Not all of it, it's not that simple, but-
Making the auditors happy.
Yes, that's what this is.
We want to keep the auditors happy.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion for Brad? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number Two Thousand Seventeen dash fifty-seven, approving the temporary lending of cash from the General Fund to other funds, including but not limited to the CDBG Entitlement Fund and the Police Station General Obligation Bond Fund as needed in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt Resolution Two Thousand Seventeen dash fifty-seven, providing for the temporary lending of cash from the General Fund to the CDBG Entitlement Fund and the Police Station BGO Bond Fund and others as needed. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Hospitality Ministries Grants, Solomon's Porch Repayment, Glenn DeBrees.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Glenn DeBrees, Community Development Department. The City Wenatchee administers homeless funds for the two-county area and the two cities, and there were a series of grants issued between two thousand ten and two thousand twelve, which are held by Hospitality Ministries. And, one of the facilities that you're probably familiar with and have seen is Solomon's Porch. The grant funds were oriented to a teen drop-in shelter, which is, and then also, which is currently in operation at Solomon's Porch, and then a downstairs teen shelter. For a variety of reasons, challenges that were encountered, the teen overnight shelter wasn't successful, and so, the terms of the, the grants weren't, weren't completed. And so, to honor those terms of the grant and, and look at repayment, Hospitality Ministries has been trying to sell the facility so that they could pay the mortgage and get into compliance of the grant, and then hopefully relocate Solomon's Porch, that ministry somewhere else. They recently have a potential purchaser for the building, but one of the things that occurred is that the appraisal is far below what was expected, far below assessed value, which is a real challenge. The ministry approached the city and asked if the city could relook at, if there's any way to relook at what was owed under the terms of the grant. City staff approached legal counsel with the question. Certainly, the city, in administering the funds for the partners, can't do a gifting of funds, but one of the things that's under the terms of the grant is that after ten years, there's no repayment required. So, the homeless funds could end up in a situation where if a sale for the facility isn't reasonable, because they can't pay their mortgage, they can't pay the homeless funds, and come out whole, they may choose, if they can't get the price they need, they may choose to hold on to the facility for ten years, in which case, there's no repayment at all. So, legal counsel looked at that and looked at an amortization process, which Steve Smith can speak to, that would look at the number of years that have gone on currently, and giving credit for those, and then look at what the remaining value would be. And, the remaining value was sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one. What this does is it gives a lot more latitude to Hospitality Ministries to go back to the purchaser, potential purchaser, to look at a second appraisal, and to have a better price point, so where they can come out whole for their mortgage, they can repay the city, the homeless funds for the valley, and hopefully, they, their intent is to come out with some equity assets, so they can reestablish Solomon's Porch. This has some real benefits to both parties versus, you know, waiting really doesn't, you know, having to wait that time period doesn't benefit either party. The, we provided this suggestion for consideration to Hospitality Ministries. They supported it. They asked that you consider accepting this recommendation. The recommendation, actually, of the steering committee, which provides you recommendations on these homeless funds, is, they voted on it and are recommending that you accept this revised amount and allow Hospitality Ministries to go down to the sixty-three seven fifty-one, sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. It would be held by a promissory note, essentially, deed of trust against the property would be second, the homeless program would be second line, so it would be, no matter how much timeframe goes by, there would be some funds returned back to the homeless program. And if you have any questions for legal counsel, and, do you have anything you'd add, Steve?
Seems like a win-win, really. I mean, it's-
What was the original amount of the grant?
Oh, there are a variety of-
Fifty-five thousand, I think.
Hundred and fifty-five, about. There were a series of grants over about two years, and they totaled that amount.
So, you basically just depreciated or amortized that out, or?
When I first looked at it, my thought process was, it doesn't seem fair that, you know, let's say they, they tried to do this for eight years or nine years, and then, and then it didn't work out, and then, under the terms of the grant, they literally would require, required to repay the entire amount. They wouldn't get credit for any of the effort they put into it the first eight years, so that didn't seem fair to me. So, and, and then recognizing the fact that if, if they can't pay it, after ten years, we get nothing, you know, so we need to come up with some kind of remedy. And so, the idea was to amortize it, to give them credit for the years they made the effort, but then buy back the years they didn't. And, and so, that's how we did it. It was a pretty straight amortization. It seemed like a reasonable-
We'll get some money back for our homeless programs. They'll be able to sell it, get some money to be able to go out and work on the other things they're working on, and you'll actually get a business in the Solomon's Porch area that will be able to produce revenue and be a part of your downtown community. So, I think it's a kind of a win-win-win. We got to eat a little bit, but we're, we could have eaten a hundred and fifty-five grand, so this seems like a-
It's a way for them to get established back on their feet, and it's my understanding they're not going to purchase another building, they're going to find a location to rent, and, you know, and it allows it to keep the need going, so.
I guess that, you know, the first two or three times that I read this, I was getting a little disappointed that we'd allocated, we, actually, the steering committee had, had allocated this money to, and, and, and really, there's been no performance. And, I, and then I recalled, reminded myself, that we, the city of Wenatchee, are not responsible for, by law, homelessness planning and response. That rests with the county commissioners of, of the two counties, and we're kind of the, we're the contractor. And, I look at the steering committee as actually making decisions that we ratify. And, and I would, if there's a takeaway from this, I hope it is that we like everybody in our community, and we treat everybody really nice, to the point, sometimes, we don't ask all the questions that maybe we should, to make sure that when we dole out a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, that they don't have unanticipated licensing requirements, that they have a business plan that will be successful, because our taxpayers are counting on that. So, I guess I'd pass on to staff, to the, to the committee, when they're developing their applications and they're reviewing these things, that they ask what might be some uncomfortable questions, to make sure that these funds are appropriately used and, and get applied.
Good point.
And, and just to note, Mr. Hughes, the Executive Director with Hospitality Ministries is here, if you have any questions this evening.
You guys have any questions for Mr. Hughes, or?
No.
No? All right, then I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I will make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor's signature on a promissory note with Hospitality Ministries, secured with the deed of trust, for the amount of sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Asparza, second by Councilmember Markhart, to authorize the mayor's signature on a promissory note with Hospitality Ministries, secured with the deed of trust, in the amount of sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Hughes. Hopefully, it works out for you guys. All right, we have two public hearing items. First, regarding a twenty-seventeen budget amendment, the second regarding adoption of the two thousand eighteen budget. We will first hear from the staff, we'll ask questions of the staff, we'll turn over to the public for any comment they may have, and then back to the staff for any action. So, Finance Director Posenjack, item J, twenty-seventeen budget amendment.
Yeah, ordinance, yeah, twenty seventeen, twenty-eight, to amend the twenty-seventeen budget ordinance, number twenty-sixteen dash thirty-two. So, last year, when the budget was adopted, there were several things, several expenses that we did not anticipate occurring in twenty seventeen, and so, this ordinance will amend that twenty-seventeen budget. Substantially, all of the amendments that are on this attachment, or Exhibit A, are one-time, are one-time expenses, regardless of which fund. Most, just substantially, all of them are one-time expenses. We've discussed this in Finance Committee and gone, Finance Committee has actually approved every single one of these requests, or amendment requests that are on here. If council would like me to go through each one, I know Councilmember Poyer would love that.
He provided it to us.
The only one I saw that I didn't remember hearing anything about was the forty thousand for the community center. What was that about?
They had some maintenance issues. There was a air compressor, or, air conditioning compressor that failed, water line breaks in the basement wall, and just increased maintenance services to that building.
Didn't remember hearing about that one, so.
And, don't be concerned about the, the lack of revenue, because we really, the, the budget is all about the appropriations at this point. It's not about the revenue. There's way more revenue than we're showing there. Just making sure all of the appropriations are accounted for.
Yep. By state law, we have to stay within our budget, and so, that covers the appropriations, the expense side of it, but we can, we can get as much revenue as we want, and we can, we can exceed that budget, and they don't care. It's when we exceed our expenditure budget that we actually have to take action on it.
All right. All right, any other discussion? All right, any members of the audience wish to address the council on our two thousand seventeen budget amendment? See no takers. I will turn over to the council for their action.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-eight, amending the two thousand seventeen budget as adopted by ordinance number two thousand sixteen dash thirty-two, revoking, recalling, or decreasing all or a portion of total appropriations provided for, entering findings that this ordinance is in the best interest of the city, and requiring that this ordinance be approved by a majority plus one of the entire council.
Second.
Counsel, motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-eight, amending the twenty-seventeen budget, and requiring that it be approved by a majority plus one of the council. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twenty eighteen budget, Brad?
Yes, so I am also presenting ordinance twenty seventeen dash twenty-seven, to adopt the twenty eighteen budget. So, we have, we reviewed this budget two weeks ago. Very few things have changed. I can, I'll quickly touch on a couple things. They've all been reviewed by Finance Committee and incorporated into the budget that you have in Exhibit A. In the General Fund, there were a couple, a couple things. The police guild medical benefit rates were released, and they were higher than what we expected, so that ended up, that created a seventy-five thousand dollar difference, basically, that, so, those numbers have changed since the last time you saw this budget. And then, it was also recommended that we add five thousand in training to the engineering department's budget, just because they're having some turnover in that department, and they figured they may need additional training funds for twenty eighteen. The rest of the funds outside the General Fund are mostly public works projects, big capital projects, and they provided me with some updated numbers on the project budgets for those, so you see some differences on those. But, otherwise, it is substantially the same as what I presented two weeks ago. So, if you have any questions?
Any, any questions for Brad, while we have him here?
Well, I am curious on the, the health insurance plan that was like an eighteen percent increase, or I don't know if it was something like that. And then, when it's a Cadillac plan, somebody's got to pay taxes, which I, I was told this is not a Cadillac plan. Is that a true statement, number one? And if it ever becomes a Cadillac plan, who pays the taxes?
So, my understanding is that it would qualify, there's a term I'm supposed to use instead of Cadillac plan, but I can't recall that term.
More benefits than-
High benefit, yeah, yes, yes, yes. Yeah, so, I, my understanding is that this would qualify as a Cadillac plan, but that the IRS isn't planning on taxing, or that federal government isn't planning on imposing that Cadillac tax until a future year. I can't remember if it's twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, somewhere, somewhere around there. And at that point, if they do implement that tax, the city is, is on the hook, and I believe the taxes, there's a certain threshold of the total dollar amount that, that will qualify as a Cadillac plan, and so, any cost over that amount, the city would be taxed at fifty percent, I believe, is what the, what the rate is.
What'd you say, fifty?
Fifty.
Over, over the base.
Over the base.
Over the base, right.
So, I can't remember what it is, if it's, say it's, I can't remember if it's twelve, fifteen thousand dollars a year towards medical. Anything over that would be a Cadillac, Cadillac plan, so anything over that fifteen thousand dollars is going to, we'd have to pay an additional fifty percent tax to the feds on that.
So, one of the things, obviously, we, in the process of negotiating with our police union, a new contract, we've now added health insurance to the list of things that- we've now added health insurance to the list of things that we were going to talk about. We didn't anticipate an eighteen percent increase, which is seventy-five thousand more than we had already budgeted, because we budgeted a seven, I mean, it's like, so it's one police officer and just health insurance premiums. And so, I talked with the, the union folks and said, we are now going to start having those discussions as well. So, we need to get someplace on health insurance with the police department that's different than where we're at.
Unfortunately, Rivercom is looking at the same plan right now, because that's what the police department has.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, we got to really, and again, health insurance is, you know, we did this battle a couple, three years ago in terms of, we brought in the high deductible plans, the HSAs. We're fully funding HSAs for most of our, number of our employees, or half. You know, whether the hundred percent for the employee, ninety percent for dependents, hundred percent for employees, eighty percent, ninety, we've got all the different ones. And we just got to keep kind of ticking away at it. We got a bunch of people go to the HSA account, right? As soon as you had a bunch of people go to the HSA account, guess what happened? The premiums are way up, right? So, then we, so that was back, I mean, every time we, when the police department brought this to us, we saved a hundred and fifty grand, right? And here we are, two years later, and we're, so it's, this is, this is a hard one. At the end of the day, we need to come up with, the employees need to pay for a greater percentage for themselves and for their dependents, and the deductibles need to go up a little bit so that our costs go down. That's the only way this is going to work.
So, they are...
And it's a battle.
Are the employees paying anything at this time?
On the Police Guild, they are not. In the Police Guild, we pay a hundred percent for each employee, correct?
I think we paid, well, for the employee coverage.
Ninety-five percent for their employee.
For dependents, for any dependents, it's, I think they pay ten percent.
Right.
And for our regular employees, it is...
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
And then, for the employee, we all pay for some of our own, don't we?
Mm-hmm, yeah, seventy-five for employee, twenty-five for dependents.
So, again, it's just, it's a, we've got some work to do there. All right, any other questions regarding the, the budget? Any member of the audience wish to address the council?
I'm Remy.
Seeing none. I will turn over to the council for their action.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number two zero one seven dash two seven, adopting the final budget for the City of Wenatchee, Washington, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
Second. Motion by councilman Markhart, second by councilmember Poyer, to adopt ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven, twenty-seven, adopting the final budget for the City of Wenatchee for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Brad. Thanks for all your work on your first budget as being Finance Director. Thought it was a good process. Mayor's report.
He wants his picture with the mayor.
Oh, hey, take that, after the meeting, get his picture taken. Not want to hold up the budget.
You got to hold up the budget, though.
Got to have the budget, right, the queen is...
Large print edition.
Exciting that we got the Curb Award today, so I wanted to mention that. I went to Citizens Academy graduation last night, so thanks to Lyle and to Anna. And your police department rocked it with twenty-five folks in a police academy that went on for twelve weeks plus weekends. Some of these guys were doing this, not getting paid. Velasquez was off the charts and your chief and all the team did a really super job. So, really excited about how that went and the good, good feelings you get by having twenty-five people. And it was an interesting group of folks that went through it. And I could tell some for different reasons, but it was really good that they, that we went through that process. So, I was real excited about that. We're not meeting for a couple of weeks. We'll meet again on December the seventh. We will have a long agenda item, a lot of year-end contracts. We met with the jail folks today. We're, we're going to get a deal. They were generous and only offered us a twenty-three percent increase over... Oh, yeah.
Holy cow.
Yeah, so we, we've worked in a, a ten percent, but we also got a lower level on our payment. So, we're hopefully going to, we are hoping that Parkside opens and that some of the folks that would normally be going up to Washington Street will be going out to Parkside. And that would keep our numbers down to a point that we are hoping are going to be able to actually do it with no increases at all. But we'll see if, we'll see if the county commissioners accept that, so we'll have that one for you. What other contracts will we have?
Emergency management.
Emergency management.
Chamber, LTAC contract.
Chamber, yep. I sat in for councilmember Kula, so it looks like the Chamber contract will be a five-year contract with exit clauses. And then, all the rest is going to the Convention Center and a little bit for the Fourth of July. So, I think that meeting went well. You'll get those contracts. I've asked for actually a resolution that puts that extra money into the debt service for the Convention Center as well. I, I think if we're going to give the Chamber a five-year contract and say, we're going to pay you this to do the destination marketing for us, it makes equal as much sense to put us on our own resolution to put all that extra money into the Convention Center debt repayment. So, I think we'll have both those resolutions as well. Other stuff?
It, it will be just a long agenda with year-end contracts, a lot of board appointments, TPA budget. The list goes on and on.
If anyone's interested in sleeping in a box, I will be sleeping in a box tomorrow night in support of Light Health and Justice. What's that?
Did you find a box?
Apparently, they have a box for me.
There?
What's that?
Where, where'd you get your box?
I've got one for me down there at, encouraging words in the parking lot there.
Just make sure it is a pine box.
I got Jimmy Sherrill in one box next to me, I got me, I got Andy Kotkamp in a box, I got...
Darcy.
Could be a big box.
Darcy's in a crate. Apparently, Jeff made her a crate.
I asked her how she was going to unload that out of the truck.
Chief of Police will be down there. He's staying overnight. The sheriff always stays, so it'll be quite, quite a to-do. So, I'm trying to figure out how late I can report to duty, but apparently, seven is when they want me, so...
Can you remember, mention the social hour for the WDA?
Yes, don't forget, is there a social hour? We got a meeting next, next two weeks. Right, on the thirtieth, yep.
Yeah.
And I have it down for what time?
Five.
November thirtieth.
Five thirty.
Five o'clock in the River Talk. Councilmembers, anything going on?
Spouses are invited.
Yeah, councilmembers, anything going on?
Yeah, five thirty.
Thanks for hanging in there with us. Thanks for the, yeah, it was all good. All right, one turn.
I wanted to say one thing. I wanted to congratulate our staff who put together the employee breakfast on Tuesday morning. We had, I think, a record number of employees attend the breakfast. And it, it, the room looked beautiful.
Yeah, thanks, Linda. It was really wonderful.
Yeah, and so, it really was a good event.
I think it's nice that the city does that.
I was harassing, my opening remarks, I talked, you know, we have a couple Douglas County employees and I talked about how we're trying to keep up with Douglas County on the employee breakfasts. They made a comment that maybe there isn't any employee breakfast in Douglas County.
And I'm aware of that.
All right.